All right, Craig, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Shaftesbury's regular Select Board meeting on Monday, August the 19th, 2013. Tonight, we're going without the safety net. That is, Margie will not be with us this evening, so this is going to be live and exciting, and there is no net below us. So let the fun begin. First of all, is there a conflict? Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with any item on the agenda?
Nope.
The Watson matter is not on the agenda, is it?
No.
No.
No, then I do not.
It might be other business. You might.
I might have a conflict.
All right. Minutes of, I believe, July the 18th. Still opening the...
No.
No.
No, we just got August 5th.
August 5th, I'm sorry?
It's okay.
See, I told you, we're off to a good start already.
You're doing a great job. I don't care what they say.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Suggestions for corrections?
Yes, one book on number five about the Shaftesbury Historical Society's kind of barbecue, which is open to the public. Well, the director, the speech, or the talk on Abraham Lincoln is open to the public. The barbecue is actually a $12 donation to the historical society.
Dan, are you picking up?
Yeah.
Good vocals? Okay.
So you want that to say, like, in parentheses, for a $12 donation after, to the public?
Yeah, the speaker on Abraham Lincoln is part of the open house, but the barbecue is for a $12 fee. And we are selling tickets.
This is Mitch Race's special chicken, I understand, so...
Oh, it's really, really good.
It is. So it is worth the price of admission, just for that.
Were you all set, Mitch?
Yes, that's it.
I had a couple. Under others present, we should include Phyllis Porio. And I think Phyllis spells her name with one, just one L.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? And under... So if you put her, I still think on number six, then, you should say Phyllis Porio.
Well, I'd ask Margie if she could just send me back the copy with her last name. I don't know her last name.
Okay. Okay, sure, sure.
P-O-R-I-O.
P-O-Q-R-I-O?
Yeah.
In the public comment, it says Shaftesbury is village center designation, right?
Village center designation, yeah.
And then in...
Down on... It's okay. Down on number eight, road foreman reports. Although it may feel that way sometimes, but on line two, it's the new grader, not greater.
It sometime grates on our nerves.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Particularly when it's broken.
The other clarification, again, was under road foreman reports. It's, let's see, one, two, three. Actually, be four paragraphs down, where Craig sought clarification from Terry Stacey regarding chloride. At the end of that, Craig wanted to clarify to residents that it is a myth roads are consistently chloridated after every grading process. I just thought it might be helpful to say that he noted the cost would be prohibitive to do so. And is that...
That is correct.
...what you were getting at? And then, Sean, down on number 10. You said on that other one?
Yeah.
I think it might be helpful if we just, in the very beginning, before you say the BCA met, it might, you might just read Margie Becker gave background on this issue, or something like that. And then, let's see, it's one, two, three, four, actually, five paragraphs down. And folks, help me with this. The Select Board noted how the Town of Shaftesbury is looking for the Select Board to approve it or acknowledge that they received it. Is it the, was it the Listers, or... This had to do with the, that, the stipulation on the Lemure and Bigurt.
Which paragraph are we in, again?
Well, one, two, three, four, it's actually five.
Select Board noted?
Yeah. Noted how the Town of Shaftesbury... I, you know what? I'm not even sure that sentence is necessary.
No, I think it's the, it related, we were discussing how it's actually, the state is actually looking for the Select Board to approve the mediation.
Right. So I would suggest we just strike that sentence.
Seeing that we otherwise afterwards approved it.
Yeah.
It is kind of a moot point.
And then, on the, at the end, right above the last motion on the Peter Cross property, the Select Board entertained a motion for partial blah blah, the fair market grand list value of, you have Glastonbury, it should be Glastonview.
Glastonview.
Glast, G-L-A-S-T-E-N-V-I-E-W drive. And, let's see. I guess that's, I guess that's about it, for me.
Ken, do you have anything?
In the 14, under other business, where we're talking about paying off the dump truck, it says, "I'd like to have a sinking fund, not a second fund."
Okay. Yep. Good catch. That's in there a couple of times in that paragraph, Sean.
Okay.
A sinking?
Sinking fund.
The ship is sinking?
Yes.
That must be an honor.
It has a...
It's like a reserve. It's a reserve.
Is it a reserve?
It's really, probably, we should say, "Reserve."
A reserve fund.
That's the way it's in.
Yeah, Ken did refer to it as a sinking fund, which is the vernacular, the long-term vernacular for those types of... Bill knows this as well. He's probably heard that term before, too. A sinking fund, yeah. Anything else, Ken?
Bill?
Carl?
Yeah.
All right, I had just one correction. It is, uh... It would be on the, under section six, top of page four, just below the motion that starts the top of that page, Sean. The first paragraph below that, it's Mark Bullhart, is actually the residence name that came. Help me with the spelling.
I had to ask Margie for the last name.
B-O-L-L-H-A-R-D-T, I believe.
That's it. And actually...
And then, he should be added to the attendees as well. That's all I have.
That's a good pickup.
Anything further? There being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the August 5th meeting as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let the record show, it is a 4-0-1 vote, with Mr. Corman abstaining. Next, we have warrants. Mr. Fisk, would you care to join us briefly and bring those with you?
These are the payables warrant. I've highlighted the ones over $1,000, and the supporting invoices are behind.
Okay. So I can see the final number. So we have check warrant, number six, in the amount of $31,415.95.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thirty-one, four, fifteen, ninety-five. Okay. Motion to approve, and a second. All right. Items of interest, those above $1,000. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $7,127.82. Bennington Banner for various advertisements that we're running, $1,008.55. William E. Daley, there are three invoices here totaling just over $1,200, the largest of which is $1,118.23. John Ray and Sons, there's two invoices that are over $1,000, one at $1,259.55, the other at $1,203.01. It's a good time of the year to be doing road construction, running the equipment. Mount Air Assessor, $1,968.76. Sycamore Landscaping, $1,300 charge, that was a, to brush hog the landfill cap, that was, as we discussed at the last meeting, something getting behind, and they took care of that for us. There are two invoices to TAM, one of which is a small one, the other is the usual July services, $6,441.14. West Oil Company, payment three of four, in the amount of $5,190.95. Remaining items are all under $1,000. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant 06, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, I referred to that as payroll warrant six. This is check warrant six, just to confirm that you still want to vote for it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm going to take it, I might appreciate that.
Yes, so, yes. Sorry, Sean.
All good.
Payroll warrant four.
Really, the payroll warrant now. Number four, in the amount of $17,456.12.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant 04, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Beamer's direct contribution warrant, PR4.
Beamer's direct contribution warrant, PR4. And it's good that I've got someone here to tell me what it is. In the amount of $129.36.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. I got one, I want you to help me out on the tax, tax rate thing. All right. Give me one minute. We had a couple items to take care of first, but I gotta work. No, you can stay right here. It's only going to be a moment.
Okay, I'm grabbing at it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any announcements? Ken?
Nope.
Just the historical society barbecue is this weekend, limited seating. Grab a ticket if you want to come. Seth Longard's from the Director of Hildene, who's going to be down, he's going to give a talk on Abraham Lincoln around 3:00, and the barbecue will commence immediately following, around 4:00.
Thank you?
Nope.
Care? Okay. I have nothing. Does any member of the public have any item, or want to discuss any item that is not on the agenda? The public is not well represented this evening, so we have no comments.
Slide your mic to Mitch.
All right. The next item is to establish the 2013 town tax rate. Mr. Fisk, if you'd be kind enough just to give us just a brief overview and summation of that, and we can commence with making that happen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I prepared a worksheet that just demonstrates the calculation of the rate and compares it to last year's rate. As you'll see, there's a very, very small change in the rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The left-hand set of figures that are headed fiscal year into June 30, 2014, show that our amount to be raised by taxes was essentially the same as last year. In fact, it's a few hundred dollars lower than last year.
Lower, you said.
Lower, yes. A few hundred dollars lower.
We want to make that point.
And...
Tax rate will go down.
Yeah. Very, it will go down a bit. And the grand list value has actually gone up a bit. So that we have a rate based on the grand list, the beginning of our rate buildup, at .3260 cents per hundred. That compares with .326 cents per hundred for the previous fiscal year, so it's going down by six hundredths of a cent, I guess we would say. Big money. And...
If we're arbitrators, that could really mean something.
That's right. That's right.
Talking about a few billion, a trillion, yeah, we could. At the same time, as where we are now, our veterans of exemptions have increased by two, but the breakdown between the resident exemptions and the non-resident exemptions has shifted. I suspect there may be some folks that didn't realize they had to make another homestead declaration this year, and that may be part of the reason why they're showing up as non-residential.
Oh, no.
They still have time to do that.
They still do?
Yeah.
Is there any way to identify those folks, if in fact that's the case?
I cannot, I cannot...
Alert them?
I can, I have a list of the individuals who make this up, and we could notify them.
I'd hate for people to miss the deadline. You know, I...
I did one here.
Would hope that that could happen, Bill.
Okay, we can do that.
How many, are you assuming, have not signed it? Just a couple? Two, three, six?
We have a total of 19 veterans exemptions. I believe we have five that are non-resident. Excuse, yes, five that are non-resident.
How many have not signed up?
I'm sorry, can't hear.
How many have not signed up, did you say?
I would say five, that I can tell from here.
Five.
Veterans. I don't know anything about the general population, and I wouldn't know.
Yeah.
And we normally get an adjustment from the State Tax Department about mid-September, and there may be a final adjustment this year on November 1st, which is, you know, going to result in some amended tax bills. As you can, you can see, as a result of the shift in the resident, non-resident veterans, we're looking at, we're looking at a slightly higher amount that the general population is supporting in veterans exemptions, and the only other thing is the Grange Hall exemption. In total, those, those two amounts equal two tenths of a cent on the rate. So the rate is, with these adjustments, .3280 compared to .3284 for the year before. So very little change in the rate. The rate is slightly lower, and if you look below that, I have presented for you the municipal and the educational rate for both Shaftesbury and the North Bennington District, and effectively what that total rate would be for taxpayers in each of those categories, resident, non-resident, District 180 and District 100, District 254. The Shaftesbury resident combined education and municipal rate is up by a half a percentage point. The non-resident rate is down by a tenth of a percentage point. The North Bennington residents in the District One, Shaftesbury District One, are up by about three percentage points. The non-residents are down by about .7 percentage points. You know, if all plays out, we've got, and this is, you know, we never quite make it come out exactly right because of the decimals, but we're looking at, we're looking at the effective collection will be within $200 or what it should be, when we're all said and done. So the rate I'm proposing is .3280 for the fiscal year ending 2014 tax rate, the municipal portion. As you know, the education rates are set by the state.
Right. I would make a motion that we set on the recommendation of our treasurer, the municipal tax rate for the 2014 fiscal year at .3280 per...
$100.
$100 of valuation.
$100,000.
$100.
$100.
Of value. You have that, Sean?
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions for Bill?
Thank you for this presentation. It's great to have it all laid out there, comparisons.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Do we need to have that documented in any fashion, in the form of any official document, or just in the minutes of...
In the minutes of sufficient. You've adopted the rate officially.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help, as always. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Next on our agenda this evening is discussion of a municipal planning grant application for solid waste planning, or the SWIP. Michael Batcher from the Bennington County Regional Commission is here to present this to us, explain a little bit what's going on, and I believe he's going to be looking for a letter of support from the, from the board to support a plan that's being put together regionally, but seeing I already took half your thunder, I'm sorry, I'll stop now.
See ya.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Oh, do I need to...
Yeah, speak in the microphone.
Yeah, right into maybe lift that guy up. Anyway, thank you for having me. When I was here in May, I described that we were trying to start the planning process for this new SWIP, or what may be called Materials Management Plan, to meet the requirements of Act 148. And we've had a couple of meetings of that group. One of the major outcomes of the discussions we've had so far is that you are part of a nine-town solid waste implementation plan. The Town of Bennington has a plan of their own with the Town of Woodford, and the Town of Stamford has their own plan, and then there's a few other towns in Bennington County that are actually a part of a totally different arrangement. And we discussed having Bennington, Woodford, and Stamford join in to create a 12-town group, because there's be a lot of possibly sharing services, and possibly, over the long run, hopefully, being able to find ways of reducing costs. At least, we wanted to start with the planning process that way, and Bennington took a while, and their Select Board recently agreed to, yeah, they would like to join in the planning process. So we're still working our process out, but at the same time, the municipal planning grant applications are due, so what I'm hoping we can do is apply for what's called a consortium grant. The maximum amount allowed is $35,000. I put together a bunch of figures in terms of what I estimate the cost of doing this plan, and we're around $57,000. That's our time, that's probably bringing in some outside consultants. It's hard to cost something like this out, but based on what I, my experiences in the past, and what I think it would, it would take to do this, over, over about a year or two, that's what we're coming up with. So $35,000 would be a substantial chunk. It would then mean that the 12 towns would then have to cost share on the remaining amount of money. We haven't worked out very many details at this point, but what I'm hoping we could do is apply for the grant while we're trying to work out those details, because we won't actually hear about the grant, and whether it's approved or not, until December, and I'd hate to lose the opportunity. The way these grants work is if, if you're an individual town, you just apply for a grant. For a consortium, there has to be a lead town, and then at least one other town joins as a member of the consortium. Manchester's willing to be the lead town, and I need, I need a second. And I, I've approached, I'm approaching you, and I'm also approaching Sunderland, so we'd have two towns in the consortium. It, it's kind of an awkward thing, in a sense, because what it, what you're doing, did you get the materials that Margie sent out?
Yes.
I should hand these out to you. Or do you want me to hand them out to you now?
Do you have a copy?
No, I think we've, I've got.
I've got it.
Copy of the resolution? Okay. Because I have copies if anybody needs them.
Resolution on the summary.
Stop.
Yeah, I've got a electronic copy. Thanks.
So at any rate, when you read the resolution, it will sound as if you're very, very responsible for all of this, in that the towns that, in other words, if you and Sunderland were to both adopt this, you would, you would be the primary towns responsible for the match, and that's not the way it would work in reality. We would need to work out an agreement with the other towns, that they would also put up, put up the match, but they don't all have to sign resolutions, and I'm not sure it's possible for me, within the timeframe, to get all the Select Boards and all of the Planning Commissions to do that, at any rate, and ACCD doesn't seem to feel that's necessary. But I'm just telling you what the resolution says, because when you read it, it looks kind of scary.
Well, yeah, it, it still does, even after what you've just said.
Yes. It looks kind of scary. Because what if you bring it to these other towns, and they said, "Ah, we're not really
interested in ponying up for this." This obligates us.
It only obligates you if you accept the money. And if, if the grant is approved, and we haven't worked out the details, then I would suggest you back away. I don't, I don't think, I don't think you can, you can always opt out. There's no, there's no reason that they're going to force you once you've, you've signed this, but on the other hand, if, at some point, we will have to figure out how, somehow, how to fund this town, this plan, so I'm hoping, I'm confident that the towns will, will, will join in and support this. I mean, they've all said they will.
What it'd be like?
But, but I agree, it is kind of a, I mean, I've had lengthy discussions with ACCD about this, and it is a very strange way of doing it, but now, the other thing, I should tell you, the other caveat here is that a town can only apply for one grant. So for instance, Manchester cannot apply for any other grant. If you sign this resolution, this is the only grant you can apply for, too. And we've been wondering what your Planning Commission is going to do with, because we haven't heard whether they're applying for a grant or not, so if you wanted to apply for something else, then you shouldn't do this either, but if you're not, then we'd like to go forward. And if you change your mind between now and September 30th, we can always throw this away.
Now, when you say apply for, are you only meaning in terms of municipal planning?
Planning grant, yes.
Yes.
See, I guess I just wonder, you know, if our Economic Development Committee, is this just in the course of this year, fiscal year 2014? You can't apply for a grant?
For this grant cycle, the grant cycle, like, the current grants run all the way into 2014, so this would run all the way to 2015.
But this is a, this is related to, this is topic-specific. Materials management, or...
Yes.
Solid waste. It wouldn't preclude other types of applications, like for, like, we recently did the Town Center Designation, or other things like that, it wouldn't...
It would just mean you couldn't apply for another municipal planning grant.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with material resources.
Oh, okay.
Municipal planning.
Yeah, you couldn't apply for another, but you could apply next year, even though this is still running. So for instance, I think Manchester has a grant that they're, that they got last year, but they can still apply for a grant this year. You just can't apply for two in the same year. But again, I'm basing this on that we hadn't heard from your Planning Commission that they were applying for anyone, anything, and so if, I have to go to your Planning Commission and get your Chair to sign this as well, if they say, no, they really want to do something, and they're going to get an application in, then we'll have to...
And is the application due?
September 30th.
Oh, I would have thought we would have, I mean, I didn't know, you know, they're working on the town plan right now, and I don't know if they were looking for any grant money to try to help put that together, or not.
We've asked, but they haven't gotten...
They didn't.
...get back to us, but that doesn't mean they won't... This is actually kind of interesting, this, by sending this out, it's kind of stirred the pot. When I met with Sunderland the other night, they said, "Oh, we're thinking about a grant," and I said, "What for?" "Well, we're not really sure, we're, you know, and Poundle told me today they were thinking, but they really hadn't figured it out, and..."
They better hurry, because there's not much time left.
I know, there's a lot of thinking.
It's like two weeks left, or something.
So, so I...
Is it September 3rd?
September 30th.
Oh, 30th, okay, okay.
But still, they have, they would have to come to you and get a resolution, so there's only so many meetings that they can do, what they need to do. So...
Is the, in terms of when the application goes in, can you get less than $35,000? Is it only up to, or if you're accepted, are you guaranteed the $35,000?
No, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if they would, I mean, if they, I haven't seen the indication. seen the indication that they would change it, but I suppose they could. They could say, "Well, you know, we can't afford to give you, it's not worth that much."
Due to overwhelming response or something like that.
Yeah, it might depend. I mean, last year, as I'm told, the towns in Bennington County did not apply for much, an awful lot of money. Well, actually, what happens is the money then goes to other regions.
Right.
So there was a lot of money that disappeared, or that we didn't take advantage of. So we want to make sure we apply for all of it, and we're not really sure what our allocation is, because they don't tell, well, you're allocated $50,000 or $40,000 or whatever. It's based on how many towns are, have approved plans and population and astrological signs and other kinds of things that are important to determine this, so.
So I'm still a little confused with the way this is written, because it says obligations of the grant, including a commitment to match funds if the request is over $8,000, over $15,000 for consortia, but it doesn't say what the match is. You're saying
Right, it doesn't, and then what it is for this, for a consortium, for $35,000 grant, for a consortium grant, that's, we can go to $35,000. I think for an individual grant, it's 15, I believe. But I, unfortunately, I went to download the materials, though I have all this in front of me, and why they have last year's on, I don't know, but I know that, I downloaded that, my mistake, and the numbers I know are different. But at any rate, for $35,000, we have to come up with a 50%, we have to match anything over 15,000, so that it would have to be a, basically, you'd be getting, you'd have to, you'd have to come up with $10,000 match.
The consortium would have to come up with a $10,000.
So we'd get $25,000 from them?
You'd get $35,000.
Oh, that we'd get $35,000?
And then we have to come up with another 10. You have to match 50% of anything, of anything above $15,000. So let's say it's $20,000, 50% is $10,000.
Okay.
So you have to come up with $10,000, and that's, that's sort of the minimum. What I'm saying is I think the project cost is more than that.
I'm not following, I'm sorry.
I know.
I'm not following this in the slides.
This is higher.
And maybe people out there, I'm very thick.
No, you're not.
Municipal planning grant, what are we planning for that we need $35,000 that we're then going to match 50% of it if it goes over, whatever? I don't follow.
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah, explain what the planning grant is for.
So the, under the previous state laws and regulations, you all were part of a consortium in essence, and in fact, I believe a consortium grant, a municipal planning grant was used then to fund the development of a solid waste implementation plan. And that plan describes the, how solid waste is dealt with now, what kinds of activities would be done to promote recycling and reuse, what kinds of educational and outreach programs there would be, and the like, and it defines that. It's, it's, it's a bit of a, there's quite a bit of open-endedness to that plan, but that's basically the plan that you adopted, and that allows you to comply with the current law.
How are we going to educate the public and utilize our solid waste disposal activity?
Yes, yes. Now, the current state, the new state law, has a lot more requirements. It lists a lot more materials that would no longer be allowed to be sent to a landfill. For instance, overtime organics won't be allowed to be sent to a landfill. So the idea is how will the, for those towns that are within solid waste management districts, those districts would have to comply with that plan, they would have to develop their own plans to comply with the state requirements in terms of managing solid waste, in terms of education, outreach, and the like. In this case, individual towns or a group of towns can adopt their own plans to indicate how they would fulfill the state requirements. And the state requirements have a lot of emphasis on reaching out to schools, reaching out to businesses, reaching
Education.
Exactly. So it's how we would do that.
And that's what we would be getting money for, from the state, to help us do the PR for this outreach.
Well, actually, it'd be just to do the plan.
Just to do the plan for the outreach.
Yeah, once you get the plan, then that will determine what kinds of outreach and the like you'll have to do. With the plan
On the assumption that we're going to be hiring experts to assist us, advisors? I'm not quite sure. $35,000 is a lot more than we're paying our local officials. I'm just not sure, I'm not understanding what we're spending the money on.
The state requirement is that you complete a materials, or solid, it's called a solid waste plan.
Right.
You complete that plan. The $35,000 plus the additional funds would be used to complete that plan, send it to the state, and hopefully get them to approve it or modify it so that they do approve it. That's what, that's the initial requirement. And then that plan, implementation of that plan, would involve the kinds of outreach and the like that we've been talking about.
I understand. So the $35,000 is not anticipated to be spent on town officials to do it, but if we're hiring consultants to assist us in preparing that plan?
It would be Michael and his, and the staff that, or
BRC.
BRC.
Now, I understand. I see. We're going to be hiring you and giving you the money.
Yeah, but I do think that we probably will need some outside consulting help, which is where things are a little, I mean, I think there, there is, we just don't have a lot of internal expertise. I think we can do most of the planning, but when it comes to certain areas, like for instance, how do you design a good outreach program? I think we'd probably need to hire somebody who can help us design that, because that's not an area that we have expertise in. On the other hand, we're in a much better position, I think, hopefully, to work with you all and get your input and figure out what you want and what you need, because this is your plan. And since we have a long-term relationship, I think we're in a better position to do that, and gather information like, but there's some cases where it might, I think it is worth bringing in outside expertise for specific purposes.
And these plans are required to be submitted to the state by when?
They are required to be submitted within 12 months of when the state adopts their plan, which is supposed to be adopted in this coming November. So what, basically, what will happen is, I'm guessing, is that the state will adopt their plan, and then they will notify all of you that, okay, you have 12 months, so start working. And what we've been trying to do is get started early so that we can, we can apply for grants. In other words, if we wait till November, it would be too late to apply for this kind of grant. So we're trying to get things started so that we have those kinds of opportunities and save you money.
It's not an option not to have a plan, basically.
But, but the reason, if you're hearing me being a little fuzzy, it's a little hard to exactly pin this down. The state has a draft plan, and I've gone through that, and I've, I can identify some of the things that they want, but again, it's not adopted yet. It may change. There may be aspects of it that'll, that'll, so it's, we're a bit of a moving target here, I guess.
Going back to the municipal planning grant resolution, which one page? And the money that Karen had referred to, which includes a commitment to match funds if the request is over $8,000 or 15,000 for consortia. If the request from the town is over $8,000, whose request?
Well, the, the lead request is from Manchester. You're basically a, they don't really have a good name for it. You're kind of a co-applicant, but you're really a member of the consortium. In other words, several towns getting together and applying for a project together. But Manchester would be the lead, they would be the recipient, they would be the lead, they would have to help with the match as well.
Would the match be
And they have to adopt the same kind of resolution. Not same kind, they have to adopt this resolution.
So we're working, we're tied at the hip with Manchester.
Which is why John O'Keefe and Lee Cron's names are on it, because they're the grant managers and administrators. So you're basically naming them as your managers for your grant, because they're the lead. Somebody has to be, somebody has to be the people who get the money.
And if their request is over $8,000
For an individual town.
We are going to be committing ourselves to the matching whatever funds or portion of that that we're supposed to?
Well, yes, though, in this case, it's a consortium, so it's over, it's over $15,000. You can get up, you could get up to $15,000 without matching, but once you go over that, you have to match, in other words, if you went $16,000, if you went $15,001, you'd have to come up with half of that $1, you'd have to come up with whatever, half of whatever percentage.
Then where's the $35,000 that you're, that we're asking?
That's the maximum amount we can ask for, for a consortium.
So in that, in that example, $20,000 would be above the 15 grand where there's no match required, so the, the participants in the consortium would collectively have to match up to, with half of the $20,000 or $10,000.
I'm still trying to figure out what about this for $35,000.
That's the maximum allowable amount we can apply for under a consortium, from the state.
So if we get $35,000 from the state, but we're going to be obliged to pay 50% if it's over 8?
15.
15.
I'm still trying to figure out whether we're really exposed to money, or whether we're not exposed to any real money.
Well, because $35,000 is $20,000 more than $15,000.
Yeah.
So you have to come up with half of that
Excess.
$20,000, and then add it to the project, so it becomes a $45,000 project. They're expecting, if they give you $35,000, we're actually going to spend $45,000.
I see, okay, okay.
That's a, that's a good way to put it.
But the other reason I'm confusing is because I think it's going to cost more than $45,000.
So, so ultimately, these, from the way I'm running these figures, these 12 towns are going to have to come up with, to do what you're proposing, $27,000. Is that right?
$22,000.
Yeah, I think it's close to 20, let's say 20, let's make it even.
Or maybe 20.
Why don't we make it an even, let's pretend the whole project is going to cost $60,000. Let's make it even, they'd have to come up with $25,000.
Okay, so if we're coming up with $25,000 between the 12 towns, is any of, right now, I think we're, we budget, and I think you're now our SWIP person, we're now committed to, or we've been budgeting around $5,200 a year towards SWIP, okay? Does any of that
Yes.
Will that apply towards this?
If it's okay with you, our plan would be to use that, use that for that. So there would be things I wouldn't do, because I'd be working on this.
Okay.
And then, then we would be, and then we would be approaching Bennington and Woodford and Stamford to provide a share as well.
For that 50, whatever it is, which is in our budget now
Yes. You would not be spending
So we would not be looking at additional funds?
No.
Okay.
The only case where you'd be looking for, possibly looking for additional funds, if we didn't get this grant, and then you had to, if we had to figure out how the 12 towns would pay the full $60,000.
Right.
And based on what I've guesstimated at, it would go somewhat over your current
Right. Allocation.
Allocation, but not, not a huge amount, but somewhat.
And what I understand, then if we, if we don't sign up, if some entity of the town doesn't, Shaftesbury doesn't sign up for something like this, we're still exposed to the cost of preparing a plan, because it's going to be a state mandate, and we go alone.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So this is intended to be a money saver for all those
Yes.
Well, I don't have a problem hearing the explanation and the fact that I would imagine at the point that a grant agreement is being drawn up, we know how many towns are involved in this, and that they've already expressed their commitment to the funding through the SWIP program or however.
Right.
And that it doesn't look to me like Shaftesbury's going to have to expend any funds other than what we're already expending, a portion of what we're already expending, so.
It's an extraordinary situation when the state doesn't
Right, right, but that has nothing to do with this, I mean, this will allow us
The only, this, this could only make it better than the worst case scenario.
Right, right.
Right, right.
And like I said, if for some reason this looks like it's going south, you can, I don't see anything in there that says you can't back out.
How do they divide up the money that you get into this?
I'm sorry.
If you say if you get in there with eight towns, how do they determine what town gets how much money? Is it divided equally among all the towns, or would Manchester be in a bigger town than we are? Do they get more money than we are, we do?
For this project or for
Well, for, yeah, for this.
For any project. If a town is on its own, a bigger town doesn't get any more money than a smaller town. Their, their, the grant amounts that are allowed for individual applicant, applications are only, and I'm sorry, I don't remember them, but there, you can only go so much. You can't, you can't ask for $500,000.
Yeah, well, no, I didn't mean that. I'm just saying, if you got, say, a pot of $45,000 is your grant, does everybody that's in the consortium get the same money?
Well, you're really not going to get any money, you're going to end up paying us to do the work, so it's not going to
Well, yeah, but it's all, it's all divided equally, right?
Yeah, they're going to lay out a plan for every town.
Well, basically, there's going to be, what happens is, there's going to be, let's say there, in your scenario, there's eight of the towns agree.
Yeah.
Michael and his folks are going to put together the plan for the eight towns, it'll be a collective cost of X.
Right.
And whatever the money is, goes toward, goes into it. So, yeah, there's no, it doesn't like he's developing an individual plan for each of the eight towns, it will be a plan for all eight towns.
But what I understand
But the money would go
Is that if we needed to put in more money, would each town put in an equal amount of money?
I would think, we base the current SWIP on population, so I would think you'd want to continue that.
I would think so, too.
I would think the population, which
The larger towns would contribute a little bit more of extra cost, because
I mean, I'm just trying to say, is it, you know, everybody getting the same deal all the way around, when I look at it?
Equitable, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think, and we'd probably, well, I mean, it's up to you, right now we use the 2,000 cents, as we probably, it doesn't, it hasn't changed a whole radical amount, I mean, the amount of money you spend now. The money actually, would actually go to Manchester to contract. Manchester would be the grant administrator on this project. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't get doled out to all the towns for them to spend, it would, it would go through Manchester.
Yeah, I know where, I know where Lee lives.
Yeah, good. Good.
Well, I don't have any problem at all supporting this, as long as we get an okay from our planning commission
I agree.
That they are not, that we're not planning to do anything, so
Okay.
I guess
Are you willing to sign it now and then have, I was planning, I'm not sure, I'm going to be on vacation, so I'm going to miss their meeting, but Jim Sullivan was going to go to their meeting and talk to them, and we, like I said, we haven't heard, but if
You mean our planning commission?
Yes, we're going to go, go talk to Chris.
I, you know, can we make a motion contingent upon approval of the planning commission?
Or contingent upon them not, not planning to do something else for a municipal planning grant?
Right.
Is there any reason to assume that once they know that we've done it, that they would want to do it too?
Well, they may have had a discussion the other night and decided to do something we just haven't heard. I mean, I, like I said, we, Margie indicated that she had heard a little bit, but then they didn't, they didn't have any, nothing came out of the meeting, so she was thinking that they weren't necessarily going after anything, but I don't know, I don't know what they were thinking.
So, you know, I see a section here for Chris to sign, so
Oh, for all of you to sign, actually.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, you know
Oh, for him to sign, yes, yes.
You know, it still is going to be awaiting his signature anyway.
Exactly, yes.
Right.
So I would make a motion, just in terms of time, to approve the resolution supporting the fiscal year 2014 municipal planning grant.
Second.
And I guess that is all. And I guess that is all.
Second.
Yeah, I guess we should add that, yeah. Did you get that, Sean? Contingent upon the.
Execution of the document by Chris William.
Chair of the planning commission.
If it makes you feel more comfortable, if I were to send this up to ACCD without his signature, they would figure, they would assume it wasn't a complete resolution. So you're, I think you should do what you're doing, but just so you know, they're basically want to see both, they want to see your signatures, but they also want to see the planning commission otherwise as far as they're concerned.
For the record and out of respect for Chris, I think we want on the record.
Um, yeah, I just want to let you know how they felt about things. Do you guys want to sign it for me now so I can have it on hand to bring over to Chris, or would you rather wait till?
You write on yours. So we have, before we write.
He's got one. He says.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Second for Mitch. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving this application or signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming out and explaining.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate the opportunity. Let me come and confuse you even more.
It's just moving so fast. You have to get it in there before you know all the answers.
Do we need to, in addition to this, do you need the draft letter as well, or does that?
No, I think this is, you're welcome to send the draft letter. We wanted to get everybody to, but I think if you pass a resolution, it gets the point across.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. If you need anything further, you let us know, okay?
I appreciate it, yes.
Well, Craig, still needs Craig's, his CEO.
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah, CEO, yeah, they're very businesslike.
Yeah. Must be a standard.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mike, for coming up.
Any questions come up on this stuff or anything related to it, or please let me know. And just, I just saw another note on your agenda that the village designation, Phyllis was in this today and we're working on maps for her to get.
Good.
So I don't know if you need anything more than that.
No, we had.
Just to let you know, we'll have the maps by her by the end of this week for that application.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thanks, Mike.
Take care.
All right, next on the agenda tonight is actually more of an informational item. We'd received communication right at the end of July from the, let's see here, I got to find her name.
Brenda Green.
Brenda Green, who is a, working with VTAL Wireless, requiring easements for properties throughout the state for the placement of poles to allow for high-speed internet in unserved and underserved areas. They are looking to, at some point in the future, to apply for permitting and approval from the various agencies that need to be involved to install a 75 to 90-foot tall monopole along Buck Hill Road. The, actually, the property owner is Shawna Bushee on 1576 Buck Hill Road.
I'm assuming that's the summit of the hill?
I'm guessing.
What's the property owner's name?
Shawna, S-H-A-W-N-A, Bushee, B-U-S-H-E-E. Basically, this is just informational at this point. They have not yet applied for permitting or set up any public hearing times, but that is something that is on the horizon, is something that more than likely will be coming. We did have some communication from several members of the community asking about, you know, some very good questions initially about whether the current tower, the actual tower that's on the top of the summit of Buck Hill Road could be somehow modified to incorporate, incorporate this new equipment on it. It was indicated to us that that was actually VTAL's first choice, but actually, it appears that the modification to that tower were going to be comparable or possibly higher than the construction of their own. So that's why they're actually looking to do a separate, a separate structure, at least initially. So anyways, that is something that's on the horizon. We will keep, obviously, the board will be kept apprised and will endeavor to keep the community apprised as those things, as those hearings and such become reality.
I have only one question about that. I've never noticed the existing tower on Buck Hill Road. Don't know, is it, and would the new one, you know, be the type that is camouflaged with like a Christmas tree or whatever they do nowadays to?
Franken tree?
Yeah, exactly.
I don't, at this point, that was not included in this. They have indicated that, you know, that at this point, it's still, you know, preliminary. They're talking about, they just said it's called a monopole, which tells me that it plans to be some sort of a freestanding structure as opposed to attached to a silo rooftop or steeple that they mentioned. But that's the extent of the details. I'm assuming that at the time that they present the plan and apply for permitting and have the hearings, that information will be, I'm assuming, included at that time, you know, the details. But it has not been included that I've seen yet.
Did I read throughout this that it's more of a public opinion, or, I mean, a public hearing, but the Development Review Board really can't deny the application or something, exempted these projects from local review, except by a comment from the Public Service Board of the, from the Select Board. The legislature has exempted these projects from local review. So, I mean, basically, it's just a courtesy to inform the public. Is that kind of what I'm reading?
Yeah, actually, you're right. That's a good, a good point to bring up. The legislature, the state legislature, if you recall, several years ago decreed that it was pretty important that we bring high-speed internet to the state. In fact, I believe the current governor, if not the former governor, had almost decided that was one of the most important things that could happen to the state. The legislature, as a result of that, as it notes in one of the initial letters, "The legislature has exempted these projects from local review, except via comment to the Public Service Board from the Select Board." So basically, at such time as they have these hearings and meetings, then the Select Board, which surely could get comments from the, from the public, but they would come to the Select Board, and then the Select Board in turn then would forward those on to the PSB for the review to incorporate or not.
Is this the only location they're looking at? Is it that one spot up in?
Apparently, here in Shaftesbury, yes. That's the only one that we've received notice of. They're looking all over the state at various spots, but this is the spot in this area that they're looking to establish.
Well, there's other, I think there is a steeple up there in North Shaftesbury that might be able to house a repeater up there somewhere.
For the appropriate fee.
Yeah, there you go. Hey, that would be a point of discussion.
I know that this says that it is for, to provide high-speed internet in unused and underserved areas, but I presume we do not know yet, or they have not yet determined how many homes will have greater access and better service as a result of this.
I have not seen documentation to support that at this point.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested. I mean, I look at this, this is a fairly small lot to be putting, I mean, it's under three acres. I don't know if there's a home on it, and I just, I do wonder if all of the property owners abutting have been notified for us to get comments back so that we in turn can support their interests. And it, I mean, it, from this map, it appears as though it's almost going to be across Buck Hill Road from the other one.
Could very well be. At this point, there's been no formal hearings or permitting that's been applied for that we're aware.
I know, I guess I want to be sure that they don't just not do any public hearings because we're not asking for them. And we're waiting for something that may not happen, and it might just happen.
Based on the communication, that we will be notified as those things come into, once they're scheduled. In fact, I believe that the hearings are a required part of the process. Even though we may not be able to zone against them or, you know, take any direct action against them from the town level, part of the process is the hearing has to happen as part of the process.
I didn't see anything in the correspondence that suggested there was an environmental assessment that was required for it, even though there is some state action, at least in terms of approval or oversight, which should have some type of environmental documents that could be presumed circulated. For instance, noise or something of that sort.
Yeah.
A while back, I don't know if it was a state level or something, I think it was at the state level, they asked you to go onto a website and mark your site whether you had access or not, and that data had been collected, that was collected a year ago, and I'm sure it's whittled down. I bet you they must have some sort of way to maintain that and see which ones serve, areas they've served that didn't have service before and what areas are less.
Yeah. Otherwise, I was just saying, well, let's put it here. It looks good. It's too much money to do that.
Yeah, it's a pretty expensive project just to go about haphazardly, so.
Yes.
Craig, I would suggest, based on what this Brenda Green wrote, "Sorry if I was confusing on this, but VTAL doesn't hold a public hearing, but if the SB wants to hold one, representatives will attend to give a presentation."
Yes.
I would suggest that we get in touch with them and say, "We want them in front of us."
Second weekend in September, or the second meeting in September?
Yeah, because, I mean, as Craig asked the question, or Mitch, somebody asked the question, "How many homes will they serve?" This says, "Building a new tower is not an option in smaller populations as they need to cover as many homes and businesses." So how many will they be covering?
If you look at Margie's note that she sent to us, Ms. Green represented that at some point VTAL would hold a public information meeting, VTAL will conduct a balloon test, et cetera. "It is anticipated the application will be submitted to the PSB by mid-August, hence the town would receive its copy around that time. I will keep you informed as I hear more." So basically, I took it from that is that, once they actually apply, the town will be notified by the Public Service Board.
When, I'm sorry, that email was when?
This was in, it was, there was an email chain that she forwarded to us. That was Margie's note to us on Monday, July 29. If you're looking at the email, that copy of the email chain, it is on the first, second, third.
Okay, that was back in July.
Yeah, that was the third, it'd be on the top of the third page of the.
I just think we ought to be a little proactive in this and call them, contact them and say, "Where is it?" And we'd like to have somebody present at a Select Board meeting.
Okay.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Thank you. All right, next item is regarding the application for renewal of the Village Center designation. As you recall, on August 5, we agreed to support that application, but it was noted, Karen, I believe, noted that it hadn't been an officially warned item on the agenda that evening. So we agreed that tonight, we would actually, as a warned, as a warned item as part of the agenda, that we would actually confirm or ratification of that action on 8/5 so that it, just in case there is any doubt as to whether it was duly warned and supported, that we could do that this evening. So.
So I'll make a motion to, that the Select Board ratify the vote of August 5, in which we expressed our support for the application to renew the Village Center designation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving the ratification of the 8/2013 approval of the, or support of the renewal of the Village Center designation, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the master lease agreement with tax-exempt financing or with municipal lease consultants. Late this afternoon, there was a flurry of correspondence, including a final note from the town attorney indicating that there was a technical flaw related to the supporting documentation that was needed. So unfortunately, that will delay us a couple of days yet to, so before we can officially approve it, it appears that everything else is in line, but that final documentation, which would tend to, could make the lease unenforceable. And it relates to the documentation regarding approval of warrant, of approval of the, how am I going to say this?
Financing?
It was, which board meeting was referenced as when the Select Board approved the financing. So anyways, it appears that it's a technicality that we should resolve. I believe that we have a tentative backup meeting for Thursday of this week to sign that documentation. Margie will be back on Wednesday. So it appears that we, long and short of it is, we can't sign the documents tonight because they're not quite ready for us to do it. So the saga continues. Next item, healthcare reform. I believe Margie and Mitch took a drive last week, or two weeks ago, and I'm going to ask you, if you would, Mitch, give a little background regarding the information that you received and what insight you got from it.
Well, I believe Margie sent the value of our plans at a glance, these guys. And what I really got out of it was, if you have, if you have coverage now and you want to know which plan to get into, there's a website that's coming, should be online this week, and it will, it'll do a plan match for you. Basically, you tell them what you have today. It'll tell you which of these plans you want to go into. That was going to be www.bcbsvt.com/vermontreform.
Say that at least three times.
Okay.
Which slash? Backslash, forwardslash?
Forwardslash VT reform.
That's all the word?
I believe so. That's how I put it down. And there's another, on the exchange, thehealthconnectvermont.gov is a good, good, a good site also.
Will you repeat that again for the public?
It's on the exchange. It's called healthconnect.vermont.gov.
Health or help?
Vermont's.
H-E-A-L-T-H, connect.
Vermont spelled out?
Vermont.gov. Healthconnect.vermont.gov.
I mean, I would assume that this, this first website is putting you into, my understanding was that Blue, both Blue Cross and MVP are participating in the state of Vermont.
CDPHP, yep.
CDPHP or MVP?
They're at CDPHP, Consumer Directed Health Plan.
No, 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 the Consumer Directed Health Plan is different from CDPHP the company.
Oh, CD, okay, CDHP.
Yeah.
So.
But did you, did you have an understanding that, in listening to them, that there's four, you know, they call them the metal plans, bronze, silver, gold, platinum, that even though Blue Cross and MVP are two different companies, that they're actually presenting, they have to present the same plans?
With? I mean, if you look at the sheet that was sent with this, there are different deductibles, different copays, depending on the platinum, gold, silver, or bronze. The lower the, or the precious metal, I guess, the higher the deductibles, out-of-pocket maximum are. And, but if you go with the platinum, you're paying a higher premium. I mean, the higher deductible, you get a lower premium. It's just standard operating procedure, you know. I would, I think they're still in the process, similar to this grant application, where they're still trying to figure out exactly the best way, and that's why this plan match Vermont Reform is coming on. Apparently, they know whether you have insurance at the state level, and you put your name in there, it's already preloaded, and they can tell you what plan matches as close to what you have today.
Because this is, this was put out by Blue Cross Blue Shield, right?
Yeah, they presented, they did this whole program at Equinox.
Okay, okay.
And this is at, I don't know, I'll pass it around. This is the website right there, just to make sure everyone got it.
There'll be a lot more.
There's going to be a lot more coming out on it.
Yep.
And it was very general, as Margie had said, it was very general, high level. I mean, you look at it, you got, I mean, I'm not going to go through the chart, but it's standard insurance.
I'll reserve comment till after I see how, how well this whole plan all shakes out in years to come.
Apparently, the, if you don't take healthcare in 2014, it's $95 or 9.5% of your net income as a penalty. So, something like that. There's still a lot of work. I would go, I don't, I don't pretend to be knowing much more about it than that. We do have navigators in the area. Will's Insurance is a navigator, but they come.
Oh, is Will's a navigator?
They come with a fee. And then they have other navigators assigned by the VLCT, and they would be at, you know, pro bono.
With the VLCT, that would be at no cost to the town.
Did you pick up anything that if people don't have insurance and don't take any action to move into whatever one of these, what happens to them?
They get, they get dinged on their taxes the next year.
And what happens to their insurance?
They, they get a basic insurance based on their, I'm not sure.
But the big, the big issue for us is our employees. And what we do, you know, we, we will ultimately make a decision as a town as to whether or not we offer insurance. Because with this whole new system.
And how it costs.
There are folks that could, you know, apply and get tax credits, and I'm not suggesting that we do that, but there will be a lot of decisions for this board, I think, to make as we get a little closer to the October 1, at which you can begin to sign up for these things.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's evolving.
Yep.
But I think the, that plan match website.
That might be helpful.
Will be very helpful. Will very, be very helpful even for these, our employees or anybody who has employees or any individual that has private insurance.
Right.
That would be very good. And last week, they said it was going to be up by this Friday, or last Friday, on Monday, it was going to be up at the end of the week. Or wait a minute, 8/23, so this Friday, this site's going to be up, so.
So I wonder if VLCT is going to be traveling around to towns, if we can request them to come down at some point as we get a little closer, to work with us. This is what we've done in the past with the employees, have the representatives of the insurance companies, you know, an MVP rep or a Blue Cross rep, when we went to Blue Cross, come and describe the plans, the scenario, because a lot of this is going to be employee-driven. There's a lot of decisions they need to make.
Yep.
You know, even if we are offering health insurance.
I'd also point out that, I mean, employees are certainly looking to their employers to advise them, which is why we need to be concerned. But I think the town has a fair number of people that are retired, that have nobody to really look to, and they too need to be serviced in terms of what are they supposed to be doing, because they're otherwise fending on their own. They're, they're not necessarily hooked into a, an employer who usually is, or historically is taking care of those issues for them.
Are you talking about town residents now?
Town residents, yeah, town residents.
Okay, okay. So you're suggesting that we be a conduit of information to town residents?
For every, for every resident, yes.
On this health?
I think we owe, I think we owe duty to the residents of the town, not just the duty to the employees, if you will, maybe a higher duty to the employees, but certainly to the town residents who, as far as they would be concerned, this is a governmental action. We are as close to the government as they really want to deal with comfortably, and we should be able to provide them information or have access, make access for them to get that information.
Then we should think about having representatives down here to do a public meeting on healthcare.
And it's coming quick. The employees enroll in October, premiums will be due by, to the state by December 15. And you get, you have until March 31st to sign up for tax credit. If your income is not four times the poverty level, family of four, you get a tax credit to cover, I don't know exactly how much, but a chunk of it.
So maybe, you know.
The, the, there is an employer, she has August 17th, I had August 13th, but the comparison plan finder is what I said, and then on the same site, there will be an employer toolkit to answer a lot of these questions that we as employer, as the town employer, Margie should be able to get those, there's a frequently asked question, there's a bunch of stuff available there. So, it was pretty, pretty general, but they, they said they're working on getting this information rolled out, but, you know, October's, it's here.
Coming up quickly, very, very quickly. We've got a month to get it together. Wow.
Yeah, it's not long.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions or comments regarding healthcare for this evening? All right. Next item is our meeting, our every meeting update on town garage status. Karen, Ken, when you want to take the lead and tell us what's new.
At our last meeting, we went back to the committee. You'll remember at the last Select Board meeting, we had approached the Select Board with the recommendation from the committee that we, this next time around, this next bond vote, rather than paying, again, an engineer for formal conceptual drawings, and I think it was $15,000 to do that last time around, that we basically would, you know, we would, we're very interested in looking at a building up north in Swanton, which is a similar sized building, and the figure that we have been discussing is in, right in the million dollar range, which would be, we had originally gone out for a bond of 1.5 million. We're hopeful that we can get what we need for million dollars. We've, we've really looked at it very carefully and closely.
Simplify the design.
Yep, the plan is to.
Simplify the roof line.
Yep. Really come up with a simplified building plan.
Building, let's make again, make the point.
Right, this is a, this is a complex. This is a garage complex, which includes certainly access to the site, clearing the site.
Braiding the site.
Braiding it. We're talking about putting in a well, an septic system, bringing in electrical. We need some sort of security system for this building. We're putting up a salt shed. So again, originally, for all of those phases of this complex, the, the original price that we had put to the people was 1.5 million. There are a lot of modifications, as Mitch was referring to, that we've made, including decreasing the size of the structure from around 8,500 square feet, or it was actually even a little bit more than that, down to 8,000 square feet. Simplifying the configuration, we're looking at, you know, basically a rectangular building without jigs and jags, uniform roof line. We're looking at material changes. We are continuing to look at a wood building because the feeling is that that gives the greatest opportunity for local contractors to be involved. But we may be looking at metal siding, we may even be looking at metal on the inside of the building, but the actual structure would be a wood structure. The salt shed building has been modified so that we're actually looking at potentially one of those egg buildings, the agricultural sort of buildings that has sort of a, an arc roof with heavy, like a poly kind of material.
Similar to the roof on the, on the Wilcox Dairy Barn, on the way to Manchester.
Exactly. Those do need to be replaced every 15 to 20 years, but the feeling is that we could save probably $50,000 out of what had been projected at about $150,000 for the salt shed. Our original cost on the building was in the $835,000 range. We're looking at something, obviously, it's going to be, you know, a good bit less than that, we're hoping, because we're cutting size, we're simplifying design. And we also have been looking at the, you know, very recent cost figures. This building, for instance, up in Swanton, is, it just got their certificate of occupancy last week. It still hasn't been turned over to the town, but a lot of our costs are, you know, are based on reality. Granted, it was up, you know, north in the northern part of the state, but, you know, we're feeling that some of our anticipated costs might be more favorable than in the original, very conservative budget had been projecting. And we are very much aware of interest rates, which anybody that has been, you know, looking at, you know, economics out there today is understanding that interest rates are going up. So that's why, again, we're looking at a bond before the end of this year, probably in the November to December time, time period. Now, we did arrange for a site visit, and there are four members of the committee, Ken included, going up to Swanton, which is where this, this new building is, that, again, from everything that we've looked at, is very similar to what we may be looking at down here. So that site visit happens tomorrow, and.
Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, excuse me, yeah, Wednesday.
It only seems like Tuesday.
It only seems like Tuesday. It's a long trip up there, and, you know, I'm certainly thankful for the four that are going there. Terry can't make it, because, and that's, I just wanted to run this by the board. He actually has vacation time, and he's working on a home construction project that he can't get out of. But he was recommending that Ron Jennings, a member of the road crew, come. Ron has been at all of our meetings with Terry, and I feel really comfortable about the questions that Ron would ask, eyeballing the different modifications that they have made up there to their own original plans. And I guess, you know, it might, maybe just for the Select Board to, you know, kind of give an okay. It's a full day, but frankly, I think the value of one of our road crew folks, who's very familiar with the work we've done on this.
I think that's, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we can pass that along to Terry.
I would like to add two comments to what you said. One thing that was discussed quite a bit at the meeting, and that I think this board should implement immediately, is identify what the costs of this project are to the medium homeowner in this community, as opposed to the cumulative dollars that are pretty scary sometimes. And that instead of referring to this in terms of that lump sum, but rather that the committee is making an effort, and if, if things go forward, that the cost to the medium homeowner will be less than a dollar a week. And I think that is something that needs to be repeated many, many, many times. To keep saying, this is a million dollar project, this is a million dollar project, which is less than a million and a half, but it's a million dollar project, I'm sorry to the average persons in, in the town, they hear, I'm going to owe a million dollars more, and I can't afford the taxes I have already. I don't need another million dollars in taxes. The point is, it's a less, it would be less than a dollar a week. And I know that Ken came to the board on a, on a platform of reducing the costs, and I believe, I certainly can't speak for Ken, but I believe the direction that this is going, at the expense of less than a dollar a week for the average homeowner, is something that he appears to be supporting, and I would like the public to know that. If I've misspoke, please correct.
No, no, I, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction, we'll put it that way. And Wednesday's going to mean a lot to me. I really am looking forward to it.
We, we, I've, we've arranged for the, the engineer that designed the building in Swanton, who we actually had a phone conference with a couple of weeks ago, the committee did, he will be there. I spoke with the town administrator up in Swanton this morning, he will be there. Their road foreman will be there, the contractor will be there. So, you know, we should be able to bring back a wealth of information, photographs, you know, things that I think will really help us a lot in taking, you know, the old and the new, and, you know, sort of melding it all together, and with full understanding that, you know, that, that the townspeople said a million and a half is too much, and, but also understanding that the longer we wait, the less we'll get for perhaps more cost. And we don't want to be in that position.
We all, we all suffer if that ends up being the case.
We do. And we do believe that with a bond vote by the end of the year, we can be going out to bid at really an opportune time. And, and again, hopefully with a project that can really help some of our local contractors. That's our intent, is to keep as much money in the community as we can possibly keep. So, more to come. And people, you know, who's ever watching, again, there will be another, we've had three pieces in the paper to date since the new garage committee formed. There will be another coming probably within the next couple of weeks. And what the committee is hoping to do is to have informational sessions around town. We'll be getting in touch with the Norshaft Lions, even the firehouses, to see if they would basically host us for some presentations. We're going to be talking to the PTO at, at the elementary school. We are probably going to be doing everything we can to get folks the information, and we really urge you, the 2nd and the 4th, Wednesday of every month, the committee meets here. We welcome anyone and everyone to come, ask your questions, give us your advice, call the town administrator, call any one of the Select Board members. There'll be a letter soon in the paper from the committee with all committee names. I, I just, I cannot urge people enough to try to get involved in this. And so when you make a vote, you know, towards the end of the year, that it's really an informed vote, and you've gotten all your questions answered.
Thank you, Karen. Ken, anything further to add?
Good.
Any questions, Mitch or Carl regarding?
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to, actually, we'll look really forward to what the outcome is after your trip this week and your meeting next. At our, at our next meeting, it'll be, we'll look for having some, maybe some, starting to head towards the finish line on this, on this go-around. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the town administrator's report. I'll report in her stead that she's enjoying some well-earned time off. She will be back in the office for a few days, starting Wednesday this week, and then we'll be back out again, but that is, that will be the town administrator's report for this evening. Not nearly as eloquent or complete as she would give it if she was here. Other business. Ken?
Jay and Margie and I went up on Twitchell Hill, met with the, met with Jay from the engineering company over here.
Oh, okay.
Jason, Jason?
Jason.
And he had recommended some things. I think he said he wouldn't have a report till the next meeting, I believe, on the drainage up there.
Some suggestions on how to maybe overstart.
Yeah, he did, he came up with something that, that I'd used a similar substance, it's, it's like a juke matting, for lack of a better description. They staple it or spike it into the dirt. But this stuff is a lot heavier than what I'm familiar with. And he was offering that as a possible alternative to the blacktop.
Okay.
And it sounded good to me. I mean, like I say, I'd really like to see it. But it's, we definitely got to do something. And that would be on the right-hand side of the road. The left-hand side of the road, as you're going up the hill, he was talking about something that I didn't really like the sound of, because he was talking about underground piping. And that can get.
Really expensive.
Really expensive in a real big hurry. So I think, just from having done that kind of stuff before, you might get away with maybe a blend, if you will, of some of that juke matting, and possibly, if it gets bad enough, maybe some underground piping, and keep that to a minimum.
So, okay, so, so, but it was good, good meeting overall, some good ideas?
Yeah, yeah, he had some really good ideas that, that, you know, like I say, they've got new products for that kind of stuff all the time. And I just haven't had a use to get into that stuff lately, but it sounded real good.
So we'll expect some sort of report from them by?
Yeah, yeah. He did say that whatever you do, those areas where we went up and, and went on the site, where the blacktop kind of weaves in and out, that whatever they do, you're going to have to run the blacktop down to whatever they do in a ditch. If you do, if you decide to use blacktop, you've got to go all the way up. But he did say that the advantage of that is that it does slow down the speed. It doesn't change the volume, of course, but it changes the speed.
Where the paper.
The water coming down.
So that is, that would be a potential benefit of slowing the water.
And it will grow grass eventually.
Yeah.
Was it, was, was he going to include any sort of a cost estimate for the, for the report?
Margie said, don't get really expensive with the, you know, don't, don't put a lot, a lot of time in it. But, yeah, he was gonna, he was gonna match it with blacktop versus the juke matting. And, and, you know, like I say, I've seen it work, but you don't expect grass out of there a lot of times within a year. It will slow it down, but it, as long as it does the job, that's all we want.
Right, exactly. So it's good news. So our residents on Twitchell Hill, as we committed when we were there, we were going to look for solutions to try to put it together in a way that is effective, but hopefully not.
not overly, uh, expensive. So, we're, looks like we're continuing to work down that path. Anything else, Ken? Mitch?
Yeah, um, I know when we, the constable was first elected, we talked about possibly, because he's a Manchester police person, that making him a, uh, constable with a police authority. And I don't know, we haven't talked about it since then, I think it was just mentioned once, but I had, I spoke with Paul, he's very interested in it. I actually spoke with Lieutenant Terra, Treya, also, and he, that, that works for him, too, to have someone that he could call on, a local person that has police authority. And this all started with the, um, I called Paul to see if he'd be interested in doing, um, road monitoring for the muster and harvest fest at the historical society. And he said, "Well, I don't think I have the authority." And I said, "Well," and I, you know, and I know we talked about it once and it never went any farther than that. And there's a couple of things that go with that, I haven't talked with, uh, Lieutenant Treya. Um, I think we oughta get a, an illegal opinion from the lawyer, too, as to whether this is something that we should do, because a lot more, there's a lot more involved with just, yep, you're, you're a constable with police authority. You gotta have, um, an evidence room, say he pulls someone over, confiscate some evidence. Police don't want that, I mean, the state police don't want that. Do we have an evidence room? Um, who pays for the, uh, dispatch, or where do they call the dispatch? Right now, Pawl has an, uh, uh, I don't know what you call the constable that has a police authority, but he, they have a contract with Bennington's where they call the Bennington dispatch to get to the Pawl constable. Um, they know, then you gotta talk about c- cars and a uniform, whether he can use his pickup truck with blue lights on it and maybe get some mag thing saying "Constable" or, um, you know, then we gotta have policies. What's, what's he gonna do if he, you know, high-speed pursuit? Break off? Don't know high, you know, do we say as a town, "No, don't, don't pursue a high-speed chase"? Uh, there's a lot of stuff in the, Lieutenant Treya said he would be happy to come and speak to us, and I mentioned, uh, September 16th, and he said that was, that was good for him. So, if, if we wanna pursue that and maybe have him come down here and give us a little more overview of what's involved with it, and he, he's all for it. He's definitely all for it. And, uh, Paul's all for it. Um, but there's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross to make it happen. And it goes along with, do we as a select board appoint the first constable and remove the elected process from that? Because if you have it, if there's, you know, that's the type of stuff I think we need to talk to the lawyer about, too. How we, how to change from an, an elected position to an appointed position and with , uh, police authority and so forth. And that way, you can do a point for a three-year term instead of a one-year term, and you get a little more continuity going with the, uh, officer.
Correct. Yeah, and those were, those are exactly the points that we, and Karen will recall, is I think she and I were the only current members of the board that had a similar type discussion several years ago, when the new, uh, requirement, state requirements were gonna come into play. And we had actually, um, at that point, for many of these reasons, because of the training and some of the stuff that, uh, that, that then constables did not have, that at that point, we felt it cost prohibitive amongst other things, plus some of the legal concerns, the fact that it's a one, one-year, um, you know-
Of, 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 appointment.
Of, of, yeah, one-year, uh, term, you know, so there's, some of these things need to be changed. And we had, uh, actually tasked the then, um, constables to do some review and come back with some suggestions. And that's kind of where that had stayed. Now with, uh, the, um, with the new constable, one of the constables having, meeting the certification requirements, it does now allow us to begin this discussion again. And actually, um, I too support the, in principle, I support the idea behind it. Um, and need, but it's, we need to have the, we need to start through the process. You hit these things, your discussion, you move them forward.
And it, having a, a sitting police officer as a constable saves the town tremendous amount of money for the 16-week course that a constable has to go through to even begin to do that. If Manchester pays for that for Paul McGee, 'cause he's gotta stay up on his certification and everything else, so that's an advantage. Uh, I guess the concern would be what happens when he no longer wants to do it?
Right.
Do we have to rescind or do we just say, "Well, he's a first constable"? Or how, how, you know, that's just language we'll have to come up with. Uh, but although, that's, uh, nuts and bolts from what I-
Could I ask you to draft, put this together in a, in a written format, what you've, what you've put together, submit it to us as the, to the board, and then we can actually then begin to move it as a-
Yeah, I mean, I, I could, I'll put down what I, I mean, I was just, he was, he's just giving me all sorts of advice, but I, I mean, I think I think-
Yeah, but I mean, paraphrase, please, don't you-
I, I would like to maybe present some questions to the town attorney, out through you, obviously, and, uh, with some of this narrative and to see, you know, there's advantages. I mean, we, the lieutenant wants, would love to see it, it helps him out. Uh, Paul's all for it, you know, he's down here, you know, he's a, he's a carpenter without a hammer.
Dan, exactly. I think that's a great idea. So, if, if you would, put it together, some of these notes, and then, you know, some of these things that were posed as questions, either that have come out of your conversation or things that were, you know, suggested by either Paul or Lieutenant Treya, that we can actually pitch to the, uh, to the town attorney for review, because at least, that helps us at least get some, some direction to, uh, try to move things forward.
Appointed versus elected, uh, one, three-year term versus one-year term, and all those things, and, you know, the questions, the car, the uniform, the evidence, the dispatch, the-
Evidence room, yeah.
Yeah, computer, yeah, the computerated, uh, I don't know what camera, I wrote "computerated", I wasn't sure, I'm sure I was like-
Yeah, we're gonna have CAD to draw stuff, no. But anyways, if you would present that, I, or put it together, and then we'll, we can begin looking at the process.
Okay.
I, I believe, as I look down the table and I see nodding heads, I believe that there's a consensus to, to, uh, begin considering it at least.
I'll work with Paul on this. I'll, I'll, I'll call Paul and see if he wants to get together and kinda see if he has any more questions, or maybe he can fill in some of the blanks I have even.
Perfect. That would be great.
Yeah, I think, I think-
It would be better to have the, the expert involved.
Yeah, and, uh-
Having Reg here would be great.
Yes, and, uh, if he, if he, he did say he would be, he was available the 16th as of, right, as of today, I talked to him this morning, so.
I, I think that would be good.
I'm wondering the fact that we're getting with, to cut down the cost, we're paying the sheriffs.
Yes, it would, it would. We would have to ba- we could basically-
Yeah, we have some contract, we have at least one of the contracts we have that's coming to an end, I believe, in December, so-
I mean, if we could bill him, if we could give him a stipend, too, per 10 hours of week of patrolling even, that would save money that we'd save paying to the sheriff.
Exactly. So, yeah, there's, there's definitely some-
Then you start getting into other things, if the sheriff can pull somebody over for speeding and, and he has the equipment that can prove it, uh, we're gonna start buying, you know, uh-
We have radar guns.
Speed guns and all that, and then calibrating them and doing all the things that go-
Well, yeah, there's, and see, those are the types of things to consider as we, you know-
Well, how much do we spend?
Pawl had, had this issue because they, you know, they're, once, once this legislation went into effect, um, they had a constable down there and they wanted to continue with that constable, but he was, he, the, the amount of money that it was gonna cost them to buy, uh, a police car and, and all of that-
Radar, you can get those police cars at auction for cheap.
Well, what they ended up doing was, um, working with the Bennington Sheriff's Department, and he actually is a sheriff.
He's a sheriff's deputy, yeah.
For the Bennington, he's a sheriff's, but he's assigned to Pawl. So, that was the way they worked that out. So, you, you know, when the dispatch comes in for Pawl, it automatically goes to their old, whether he's still actually considered the constable or not, I'm not sure, but-
I believe he's still the county's a constable, I know.
Yeah, but he's actually-
I know what-
Working through the sheriff's department.
He has a few hats.
Because they have a contract-
Well, the dispatch, Pawl, the dispatch goes through Bennington.
Right, I know, that's what I'm saying, but it would, but then it goes to-
Yeah.
Him.
Yeah.
Their, their man.
I, I have a friend in, uh, I went to high school, he's a, he's a constable up in Wells, too, and I'll, he went through, Wells paid for the whole program for him to go through the 16 weeks. And I can talk to the select, some of the select board up there and see if, uh, maybe get some ideas from them and why they thought it was worth it.
Yeah, indeed, that's-
You know, one of the, one of the, um, things that I think could be really helpful, and it's, I was gonna be reporting in other business, was, it has to do with, um, some dog control issues. Um, you know, we have a lot of enforcement issues that have been kind of put by the wayside.
Because we don't have a constable that has any-
We don't really have somebody that can go and enforce, and, you know, you can send the, the animal control officer there, but, you know, if you're going, and I think we are at a point, and there'll be more coming to the select board, but, you know, by statute, when people, and I'm, anybody out there that has an unlicensed dog, when their dog is not licensed and they go, you know, April 1 comes, they don't license June, the end of June comes, those dogs can actually be impounded. The select board has the right to impound an unlicensed dog because it's in violation of our ordinance. Um, and, you know, there are some folks that I know forget, or, you know, it's just sort of put to the wayside, but it's become a real issue. And we had, you know, the town clerk and the animal control and Margie and I met, um, a week ago, and, you know, that's, that's one of our big issues is enforcement.
Well, the whole idea, the town licenses, you know, they've got their rabies shots.
That's right.
And if you don't know they have their rabies shots, then, you know-
Yep.
It's a health, it becomes a health issue.
That's the whole point. I mean, by statute, you know, they, they, these dogs have to be licensed, and you're right, they cannot be licensed until there is proof of rabies.
General question, how many hours do we pay the sheriff currently per week?
I think it's, we're at 20 hours currently, with one of the 10 hours of that contract, I believe expires December, the first weekend in December.
That's right.
That includes the car, though.
Yeah, it's-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's basically, we, they, we're contracted that they are in the community 10 hours per week.
Yeah.
So, whether, you know, for, whether we call and ask them to do something specific, which only happens occasionally, but-
Then the next question comes up, what do you do with the, Paul is a licensed, regular police officer.
We actually-
What do you do with the other constable?
For, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get fifteen.
You have to train them, we'll send them?
It's, that's, that's part of the discussion that we need to have and how-
Right, right, well, I'm just bringing it up now, just-
Yeah, exactly. It's how do, it's exactly, how do you handle that situation?
But you can't do that with a constable being one year.
Right, exactly.
Right, that's, that's our real problem.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where we need to go from where we are today to where we move going forward, so.
And that'll be part of the policies.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mitch. Anything else on that topic before we move? Carl?
Oh, thank you.
Karen?
I just did my animal control stuff, so-
Okay.
Good.
All right, I have two things. The first one is actually as simple as to report. You have, most all of you, and I heard from Ken, have given me feedback related to, uh, Margie's performance. I need to put it together. Now, it's on my, it's my onus for-
I did, I gave it to you.
Yes, you did.
I gave it to you.
Ken actually reported to me that he did not get the first one. You've got, I'll give you, I'll, I'll resend this, the document, give me some feed-
I have to put it, I have to put that out and then hand it to you, all right? 'Cause I couldn't, I couldn't-
Either that, or you can look at it and send me some notes back.
Okay.
Either way, and I'll, is out, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna-
I finally found it, I got the computer working again.
Yeah.
Then I found it, I said, "Well, it won't say, it won't put down what I wanna do", so.
Yeah. Um, like I said, type, type some notes in it, send it back, and I'll incorporate it into a document.
All right.
Make it easy on you. So, if you got it, you've got the document.
I'll, I'll, yeah, I think I've got it stored. Uh, if I don't find it, I'll get back to you.
Yes, there you go.
I'm not the greatest computer guy in the world.
Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna be bringing you kicking and screaming along, Ken.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Since you mentioned that, I, did I miss the self-assessment that was provided?
No, you didn't. I, I'm asking for that, to compare. That's a normal practice. That's the way we've done it. Uh, the second item actually has to do with a topic that was brought up by a member of the community in the last meeting. Um, it relates to, uh, a comments in the, uh, by a member of the community regarding a property here in town that, uh, there was a concern about, uh, various violations of, uh, zoning. Uh, that property relates to Alan Watson. Um, and I just wanted to, um, um, after that last meeting, um, I talked with the zoning administrator, um, and since that point, he was, he moved forward with the, um, with presenting some violations to Mr. Watson. I understand that there, before I, before I go any further than this, I just wanted to ask a little bit about the board, um, regarding, you know, moving forward with this. I believe that there may be a member or two of the board that may, before we act on this officially, may or may not have something that they feel is, uh, a matter of, uh, conflict of interest.
I have had business dealings with Mr. Watson in the past, and I would have to recuse myself.
From specific discussion?
Any, any action on his-
On beer, that's fine, thank you. Um, is there anybody else?
Same for me for over 20 years.
Okay, well, in that case, um, while this is not official action, I do appreciate that, and, um, I just want, then I'll ask the other members of the board, just for sake of, so there's no impropriety, if, if, for this last, this will be the last topic for right now, if you would, if, maybe it'd be better, step, step away from the, no, we can adjourn. If you just step away from the table just for a moment while I have, this'll be a very brief thing, and then we'll, um, this is the last thing I have, so then we'll look to adjourn the meeting shortly thereafter. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, for taking that step. Really, the, all the, the extent of the conversation is this. Um, the zoning administrator has indicated to me that the statutorily required, um, timeframe for response, I think expires today, and his question was, should, uh, his, was asking for recommendation on moving forward with the town attorney as, as this, to, to move the process along. Uh, the, as, just, in summary, there was several complaints regarding several different issues, uh, zoning violations, um, the, uh, the documentation required at least a, uh, a response to, uh, the zoning administrator or curing the problems within seven days or notice of, um, I think, you know, practicality, even if there had been a response as to plans to do something, um, you know, we'd probably work a lot, work with the landowner. Tyler indicated to me late this afternoon that there had been no response, and his question was, "Shall we proceed down the path"? And I guess that my only question to you is, is just confirmation, uh, we're wanting to do that.
I think we should.
Yeah, I, you know, again, I think we've, we've certainly had a problem in the past with enforcement, all small towns do, but-
In lieu of the complaints.
We have to enforce the zoning bylaws that we have.
Right, and I know that this is, unfortunately, not to single out an individual, but this is, uh, a situation where I, I know, since I've been in the community, I know that there's been, um, some of these issues that are being addressed have been concerns for the whole